We're going to reconvene the November 6th Parker Town Council meeting at 7:07 PM. Council, please sign in. All council members are present. I see we have some scouts in the back of the room. If you're a scout, come on down. Did you know this was gonna happen, boys? No? It's alright.
Do we really have to?
Whoa, careful, watch it. Our insurance isn't that good, so be careful on those steps. You don't have to bring the big book down unless you want to. Any other scouts in the room between these two fine gentlemen? Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, Brownies, anything? Nope? Alright, audience, this is your time to be led by these two young men. They're gonna lead us in the most important part of the evening. Come on up, guys. So you guys are gonna lead us on the pledge of allegiance. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna turn around and face the flag and get set, and everyone's gonna be quiet until you start the pledge. And when you start the pledge, everyone's gonna jump in with you. Sound good? Alright, floor is yours, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good job, guys. Way to go. Alright, we've got a special presentation tonight. A presentation of the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association Award. My understanding is we've got the Executive Director Allison Kincaid here this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, welcome. Come on down.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and Town Council, thank you for having me this evening. My name is Allison Kincaid. I'm the Executive Director of the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association. We are a professional organization that serves over 1,300 professionals all across the state of Colorado and 120 agencies. Our organization has a pretty prestigious awards program that is designed to recognize and celebrate outstanding individuals and organizations that contribute to the success and value of parks and recreation throughout the entire state of Colorado. We have different award categories, all of which are defined by pretty strict criteria that require tangible demonstrations of improving the quality of life for those in our Colorado communities. It's a great honor tonight to be here, to share with you that your Parker Parks and Recreation Department was the recipient of two of these prestigious awards. A truly remarkable achievement. First, the Aquatic Therapy Program for Chronic Conditions was awarded in 2017 Columbine Award for Programming. This program works to address and help the growing number of individuals within your community with chronic conditions. Through innovative program design, implementation, and outreach, the Aquatic Therapy Program has positively impacted over 3,700 participants in the first year. With innovative facility design and programming, the Parker Recreation Center has become a regional leader in community-based aquatic therapy programming. I'd like to present the Columbine Award to your programming staff.
Didn't know you were gonna get your picture taken, did you?
Next, Jared Musoul, Park Supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department, was awarded the 2017 Parks Professional of the Year Award. A prestigious award given to only one park professional throughout the entire state of Colorado. This is due to Jared's leadership and expertise in his field that has resulted in a fine-tuned team that has Parker's fields, medians, and open spaces looking pristine and beautiful for every user. The town of Parker is very fortunate to have such a dedicated and committed individual who continually strives for excellence when serving the community. On behalf of CPRA, my sincere congratulations to Jared. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Do you guys have anything to say?
Come on, Hillary.
Can I have Friday off? Well, it's one of those awards that you really, you know, you do. You try really hard every day. And Parker's a place that I came from, from another organization many years ago, and I made the right decision. And, you know, I strived really hard, and it was an honor to get this through the CPRA Committee as well as my peers, and the nomination that came from the Parker folks, as well as the state, the CPRA folks that are statewide that nominated me and selected me for this. So it's an honor. I really appreciate it, and thanks for every bone. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good job.
It's hard to follow up. But yeah, I just wanna thank CPRA for this awesome award, and obviously the town for giving us the resources that we needed to lead the region in our aquatic therapy and kind of demonstrate and hopefully help others rise to the occasion to give that and show that for their community as well. So yay.
Excellent. Thank you. It's a little unfair. His has a box and hers doesn't.
I know, but look, nicely crafted out of wood.
Nicely crafted out of wood, see? There you go. Excellent. Thank you very much. Alright, next up on our agenda is our Parker Chamber of Commerce update. Dennis, Mr. Houston, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hey, I do prefer the mood lighting you had before. It is very bright. A few exciting things happened at the Parker Area Chamber of Commerce, and due to travel one time and sickness another time, I missed our last two council meetings. So I'm gonna give you a quick rundown of some cool things that have been happening since we last spoke. Looking under our four areas of focus at the Chamber, under our competitive edge for business category, we have some cool staffing changes taking place at the Parker Chamber of Commerce. Lael Taylor, who joined our team last spring, has moved into the role as our new Parker Days Director and already well underway. And I think we've had a dozen or more meetings already in the last few weeks, couple of weeks, about Parker Days, and made the mistake of looking at the schedule. I think we have 20 scheduled between now and Christmas. So we're fast-moving forward for Parker Days 2018. We've also, we're excited to welcome a new Special Events Director at the Chamber, Candace Colridge. Some of you may know her. Candace is actually a Parker native, first Parker native on my tenure that's worked at the Parker Chamber, so we're very excited about that. Candace's family opened the new Homestars Furniture Store last year in Parker. So you may know, you may know their family through that. And then we have a new position created at the Parker Chamber that we're excited to add to our team, and we're actually interviewing for this over the next couple of weeks. And that'll be a new position as our Workforce Director. Workforce is the number-one challenge, we hear from the business community as we visit with our businesses that are members of our organization here in Parker and the region. And so our Board of Directors has made that commitment to bring someone on full-time to focus on just that effort. So we're very, very pleased with that. And that person will work with area businesses in regards to needs they have for employment, and also work with area schools and colleges to look at what that pipeline looks like. And already have had some of those meetings underway. So we're excited where that's gonna go, and we will certainly keep you posted as that moves forward. Also, in relation to the staffing changes, I'd like to publicly say congratulations to my friend Sarah Crowe, who today, I believe, yeah, today officially joined the team at the Pace Center. So congratulations to Sarah, and we wish her nothing but the best, and we look forward to working with her in her new capacity. A few other fun things happening. Our Young Professionals Group has gone through a refresh, if you will. They had an open house to invite new young professionals to the Parker area to join the organization. Had about 75 in attendance a couple of weeks ago at an event over at Purgatory Cellars. Next Friday, we are hosting a holiday open house, ironically, at Purgatory Cellars as well. Just something we do each season, either at our business or at our office or at an area business, just as a holiday open house for the Chamber. We also had a very memorable ribbon cutting on Saturday. Many of you are well aware of the incident that happened last April at R&amp;K Running. We were pleased and honored to be a part of their ceremony on Saturday for their official re-grand opening after they've gone through their remodel, and had a couple hundred people that turned out for that. So it was a great, great day for them. And they shared the story that they had over 200 people that showed up immediately following the incident as well that happened last spring to help clean up. So it was, it's really amazing to see how our community comes together in those times of need. Under our area of advocating for community, last week, we hosted our Douglas County Business Alliance that we're part of with all the other chambers of commerce and economic development groups in Douglas County. We hosted our annual board retreat here in Parker at the library across the street. We have our largest ambassador team we've had in many years. We have a team of 20 that just went through a retreat process in the last two weeks as well. A week or so ago, we hosted the Douglas County School District Board of Education Candidate Forum. We're happy to have all but one of the candidates join us that evening. The one who was not in attendance was traveling on business. And try to get that information out to the community so people can make an educated vote with Election Day coming up tomorrow. Our entire team at the Chamber had an opportunity to meet with some of the team from E470. And I know Josh serves on that Board of Directors, and we actually have a follow-up meeting next week with their leadership team, just looking at how we can partner with them on their educational campaign to get that word out on some of the cool opportunities taking place there, especially as we look at transportation as one of the big three areas that we focus on at the Chamber in addition to affordable housing and workforce shortage. We'll be co-hosting a transportation summit in the coming weeks with our State Chamber Association and the Denver Metro Chamber, again, looking at what those transportation solutions are in the upcoming legislative session and into next year's potential ballot initiative. We're pleased to participate in the Harvey Open Space Stakeholder Meeting a few days ago here at Town Hall. It's pretty cool when you look at some of the plans for that property. Couple things under our strong economy area focus. Our final wine walk of the season took place last Friday. That's always a fun one because you have a lot of people that come out in full costume with that proximity to Halloween. We were pleased to have, on a cool evening, we brought 800 shoppers into downtown Parker. And as they always say, many of our businesses said that that's their busiest night of the week, and especially for our restaurants and pubs. It's their busiest night of the month, I should say. Coming up this Thursday, have our second annual sippin' shop, which will take place at the Pace Center. I think we're using every square inch we can. And have several dozen exhibitors at that, featuring a lot of small businesses, home-based businesses, giving people that first chance to go out and do some of their holiday shopping. That'll be this Thursday from 8:00 to 12:00. And this is not a ladies-only event for guys that think that this isn't for them. We also have a man cave that will be set up there for the entire day. So Josh, you're welcome to join us over there at the holidays sippin' shop. We are looking at a couple of other events coming up, and then I'll wrap up. On December 14th, we have our community celebration. You'll see invitations for that in your mailbox in a couple of days. And we'll be looking at celebrating business and community success on that evening over at the CU Denver South Campus. One other event coming up on Thursday, this Thursday, November 9th, over the lunch hour, our Business Impact Meeting, our quarterly meeting to look at regional issues. We're pleased to have Joe Rice joining us. I know some of you know Joe. He's from Lockheed Martin, their Government Affairs Director, and he's gonna be talking about the aerospace industry in Colorado and its direct connection to the Parker area. And we've had some conversation with Joe and their team in preparation for this, and in our research learned that there are 256 families that live in Parker that work directly for Lockheed Martin. So it does have a direct economic impact on our community. And last but not least, under the umbrella of working on workforce and careers, we're getting an early start this Wednesday, November 8th. We are one of the sponsors and also one of the exhibitors at the annual Career Expo that takes place at the Douglas County Fairgrounds. And they'll have 5,200 eighth graders at that event. They're going through, in eighth grade, their process of determining what their future career is. And we'll be there as Chamber of Commerce representing small business and talking about entrepreneurship and what some of those careers are in the Parker area and Douglas County as well. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Other than that, nothing's going on at the Chamber.
Council, any questions for Dennis? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is the Downtown Business Alliance update. I did get a text from Shelley that she's not able to be here tonight. So unless, is there anyone else from the DBA representing? Doesn't look like it. Alright, we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for you guys to come up and give input to Town Council. This specific section of public comment is for items not on our agenda. So if you're here for Agenda Items 8A, B, or C, there'll be public comment on those items at that time. No action will be taken on public comment right now. It's not a Q&amp;A session. It's just an opportunity for you to come up. There's a three-minute time limit. There's a clock right above my head. I've got a copy of it across the wall there. If you come up for public comment, state your name and address for the record, and then after that, we'll hit the timer and it'll start rolling. At the end of your three minutes, I'm not gonna be rude, but I'll say thank you very much and invite up the next person for public comment. So let's start on this half of the room. If there's anyone on this half of the room here for public comment, this is the time to come on down. Mary Lou, you were moving. Did you wanna come up for public comment? You'll wait? Okay. Alright, then we'll move to, from Tom, raise your hand, Tom, so everyone can see you, to this side, public comment. Come on down. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mayor, Scott Wright, 12065 South Majestic Pine Way, Parker, Colorado, 80134. And could you guys turn on the overhead?
See, you've got it upside down. Turn it.
Okay, so here's where we are today, and here's the Pine Bluffs community. So COBOL's proposing to put in, I guess, a special review medical plaza, but then also, they're also looking at putting in a substantial commercial development. And really, I don't have an issue with the medical plaza or the development. I knew when I moved into the area that it was gonna be there. However, this is what it looks like today, so there's nothing in there. When you look at the road cuts that COBOL proposed as far as us buying our houses, there's three clear curb cuts. And each one of those is marked by signs that say "Road Coming", "Road Closed", etc., except for one spot. And that's the one spot that enters our neighborhood. Now, if you were to investigate this upon buying your house, you couldn't actually find it on the Pine Bluffs plot. You couldn't find it on the Pine Bluffs 2 plot. Why? Because it was added on a third iteration. So they literally, in a plot note, wrote in that said that we can have access onto this residential road. There's four bus stops that are on this road. They wanna make use of our residential turning area. And the developer's perspective on it is that he doesn't care because he put it as a plot note. Now, the developer of the health facility, it happens to be Sky Ridge. So when we reached out to Sky Ridge and talked to them, they said, "Oh no, that's too dangerous for us. We want them to find us in another way. We're not gonna develop there." So COBOL is interested in pursuing this plat note and saying, "Hey, a plat note, and I'll just find it for you here in case y'all have never seen a plat note before." It's a little bit ridiculous. This is what's shown on the plat. There's no curb cuts that are shown. And literally, this note right down here that says "We will have one access onto Crooked Pine", Crooked Pine is on the opposite side of the neighborhood, and they didn't update this note to show that the actual street had moved. So as a home buyer, you'll look at the plot notes, you'll look at your plat and say, "I'm safe. I'm not gonna have something in my backyard that I don't know is gonna go there." Well, now, all of a sudden, they wanna put a commercial driveway. They have no idea of vehicle counts? We don't think any vehicle counts is appropriate for a commercial development. So just, again, just specifically, they didn't call it out. Why'd they hide it? When we bought our homes from Toll Brothers, this is the map that we were given. As you can see, there's no curb cut shown down here at all. On none of the Toll Brothers documents is it shown. None of the way you would've got it is if you would've got the latest iteration that was after all of us bought our homes. Okay? So we'd like to see if the town could at least look at, there's gotta be some standards for going into a residential neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Next up from that section? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Amber Misgen, and my address is 20455 Narrow Pine Lane, Parker, Colorado.
Would you mind spelling your last name for me?
Misgen, M-I-S-G-E-N.
Thank you.
Sure, and I'm here on the same issue, that being the safety of introducing the commercial traffic into the Pine Bluffs neighborhood. There's actually kind of two issues that are on top of this particular parcel development, that being the unplatted access onto East Shady Ridge Road, and also the potential for cut-through traffic down Scenic Park Drive between Hilltop Road and the proposed development. That road does go past our community pool and multiple school bus stops. And we just wanted to ask Council to really consider the safety of the residents of our neighborhood as you consider COBOL's development of this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up from that same section? Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Dewitts. I live at 12259 Piney Hill Road in Parker.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, it's me again. A week ago tonight, you already heard my spiel. You and several members of the Council understand where we're at in Pine Bluffs.
Absolutely.
I'm not gonna go into any more detail because you've already heard it all. John back here is, I know, taking it under his wing, and we appreciate those efforts. I just wanted to reinforce that we're worried about both the Toll Brothers side and the D.R. Horton side of Pine Bluffs. Never in our wildest imagination do we think when we purchase those properties that there would be a commercial or retail, commercial probably, but never retail entry and entrance and egress into those areas. So we're very, very concerned for the safety of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Next up from that section?
Hi, my name is Linda Schutzenberger. It's L-Y-N-D-A. Last name is S-C-H-U-T-Z-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. And I'm at 20578 Northern Pine Avenue in Pine Bluffs in Parker.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a possible, I was thinking about what could be done about if cars are going to end up going through East Shady Ridge, that we could either put in speed bumps or a gate with a code so that people can't just cut through our neighborhood because it is a neighborhood to us. So those are just a couple of thoughts that I had to either slow traffic down or keep it safe for our kids.
Thank you very much. Next up from that section? Okay, seeing none, we'll, I can't see right behind the podium, so if there's anyone behind the podium, nope. In that first row, nope. Okay. Then we'll move to the next section over here. Anyone for public comment on this side? Name and address for the record, please. And I'm sorry that you're gonna have to lean over for that microphone.
My name is Brent Safer. I'm at 20547 Northern Pine Avenue in Parker. I'm in the Pine Bluffs area as well. So I'm here for the similar situation. I particularly don't want commercial traffic in our area through our neighborhood. I walk my dog. I run. I'm a runner. I run through that area almost every day. And so to imagine the increase in traffic and, you know, risk to our, besides all the little kids, once you put a commercial road in there, I would think the control of what that commercial road would be used for would be hard to control in the future. You know, are we gonna have ambulances running through there? Because it's gonna be a medical facility. I have sort of no knowledge, but I know when I moved there, it wasn't there, and it wasn't on the plat. And now somebody's coming along and trying to change that. So I'd prefer it not to be that way.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from this section? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to this section over here. Scouts, you wanna come up? No? You already did your duty? Alright. Anybody else from this section?
That was the deer in the headlights, look.
That was the deer. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robin Lofton. I'm at 20284 East Shady Ridge Road, also in Pine Bluffs. Same issue. I moved here just a couple of years ago. And one of the reasons I chose Parker and my neighborhood is because of the family-friendly atmosphere. I have three small children, extremely concerned that it would be an acceptable possibility for commercial and retail traffic to run through our neighborhood and pose a risk to our children. So I hope you can consider something, an alternative. Because that's not really what I understand Parker to be about.
Thank you very much. Same section? I think we had someone in the back or gentleman in the, yep. You just come, yeah, come down right up front. You're good. No one's looking at you. Don't worry. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Ron Cartwright, 19917 East Shady Ridge Road. I'm surprised I live in Pine Bluffs as well. So I actually live on Shady Ridge just across from where the potential access road is. So we have three kids, and we see, not only is the pool access just up from where the proposed access road's gonna be to the commercial development, but also along Shady Ridge Road is the walkway for all the dog owners. So not only is the bus stop right outside our house just up the street from where the access road would be, but all the dog walkers, which is probably over half of the development, come down the same access, as well as kids on scooters, kids playing in the street, believe it or not, surprise. But as a, you know, living right across from where the entrance is, I think I've got a pretty unique perspective of, you know, what really does happen down there. It's pretty concerning that there would be an access road there. So I just wanted to voice my concerns as well.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? Yeah, and if you're here for anything other than Pine Bluffs that's not on the agenda, you can come up too. It's not, it's not just, not just Pine Bluffs.
You don't have to live on something pine either.
Yeah, no shady, no pine, no. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Nothing shady here. My name's Bill Johnson. I live at 19895 East Crooked Pine Circle in Pine Bluffs. And some of the concerns that I was gonna bring to the table tonight have already been conveyed. I wanted to fall on, in particular, the gentleman Scott, his display. I absolutely agree with him that as much as we've talked as a town, and I know a lot of people in town, various departments in the town, about this being an above-board process, transparent, this was buried. This was in the third iteration plat note, the cut through, in particular, to Shady Ridge. And the language is, in one sense, it's very nebulous. And I'm looking at the very original ordinance here that was deeded in April 2004. And in a commercial-use area, absolutely, as I understand this to be a special-purpose emergency room area, this would be a, I'm sorry, this would be a use by special review. However, I actually think a good property attorney, and this is my area of expertise, by the way, can make the argument that this is a mixed-use area. Unless this has been amended, there's no such provision for use by special review. Just in general, I think the idea is ill-conceived. If you've, I don't know if Council has driven this road, but approaching the turn into Pine Bluffs from Parker Road, no matter how you approach it, whether you do a U-turn or you approach it northbound, or you're turning from Hess to Parker Road, there's a certain velocity, deceleration, acceleration distance. It's very short. I've had several near misses. And with an ambulance, high-velocity vehicle, I'm telling you, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when you have a collision. And I want, I implore Council to take that into consideration. On a brighter note, if what we're looking for here is some kind of compromise between city, the developer, and the HOA, I would ask that... that this road cut, wherever it's gonna be, is made, is a little intrusive as possible, whether that's a bridge or a roundabout, or however you're gonna do it. And I guess that's about it. I would also ask, and this may seem over the top, but if, if council, uh, and the developer decide to pursue this project, um, did that parcel of land, there's a parcel of land or a, a plot for a home for sale by COBOL right now, I would ask that they, uh, deed that to the HOA, so the HOA can actually put that to good use for a clubhouse or something, given that there, there's very little amenities in there, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill.
Anyone else on this side? Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Jim Tollischud, um, two zero two zero two Spruce Point Place, Pine, uh, Pine Bluffs, same, uh, same topic. Uh, just very simple, I think, uh, we, we moved to this community because of families, kids, safety, amenities for those kids, and, uh, great neighborhoods, which Pine Bluffs is, and, uh, allowing uh, commercial traffic on those residential streets, uh, makes the neighborhood less safe. It's a black eye in the community if it happens, and, uh, it's you guys that, that help keep the town, keep that reputation for the town, keep that reality for the town, that it is, uh, family-friendly with the amenities. Uh, as you guys have the power to make decisions in the future, uh, I hope you make the best decision for the families and the kids in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Alright, anyone else on this section? Anyone else in the room? Aw, you didn't see me call that section earlier, did you? Just teasing. (laughing).
This is my first, uh, first time here. My name's Terry McIntosh.
Name and address, please.
My name's Terry McIntosh. I live at two zero four eight two Nero Pine Lane. Um, and I've listened to all the comments and I really don't have anything new to say, other than I appreciate the fact that your job is oftentimes trying to balance economic development with the safety in our communities. So I would just ask that you not, you know, put the, the homeowners and the children, I have children myself. Now, please don't put them at risk, um, for the sake of economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll close public comment at seven forty P M. And we'll move to the next item, which is our, uh, consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine, be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have a consent agenda item removed for further discussion. Before you guys tonight, our consent agenda items six A through six C, I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please, on those items.
I'm, uh, move as, (laugh) I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Josh and a second from Amy. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is our Town Administrator's Report. Michelle, do you have anything else to add to your report?
I do not.
Alright, for those of you watching at home for the first time or waiting in line to walk out the door, if you ever have questions, we've got a great Town Administrator's Report online. We put it up quarterly?
We're moving to quarterly.
Moving to quarterly. It's got great information about what's going on in the town, development, so on and so forth, so I highly suggest everyone check it out. Alright, uh, after that, we're gonna go ahead and, we don't have council items on here.
No.
Alright, hey, I'm not gonna complain. Let's move on then to item eight A, this is our section for public hearings. We've actually got, let's see here, for eight A, we have two items. This is Trails at Crowfoot Rezone Sketch and Preliminary Plan. Uh, first item is ordinance number three dot three one five dot one on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend the Hess Ranch Development Planning Guide pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance and amend the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And item number two there is the sketch and preliminary plan. Stacy, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Uh, quick question, do you have a different hair, did you get a haircut or something? Your hair's different.
I did not.
Oh, it looks different.
I wish I could tell you, yes, but...
You're gonna tell me, okay, just curious, just something looks different on your hair. You can say it looks nice, so, go on.
Alright.
(laughing) Throw you a loop there, didn't you? You need to get a compliment tonight.
(laugh) Wasn't expecting that. So tonight, we're gonna discuss an application to amend the Hess Ranch Plan Development. It's a amendment to adjust internal planning area boundaries within the four hundred acres located on the east side of Crowfoot Valley Road as a result of a proposed realignment of North Pineary Parkway. In addition, we're gonna reserve the southeast corner of Bayou Goldsch Road and North Pineary Parkway for commercial uses and reallocate those residential units within the internal planning areas. There's also a sketch plan, and that is for eight hundred and ninety residential units on four hundred point two acres, and a preliminary plan for seven hundred and fifty-three single-family units on four hundred and six point six eight acres. So, the property was annexed into the town in two thousand and three and zoned the Sunmark Plan Development. In two thousand and seven, the property was rezoned into the Anthology Plan Development. On September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, council approved the Hess Ranch Plan Development, which split the southern half of Anthology into its own standalone plan development. The proposed PD amendment tonight only applies to that portion of the Hess Ranch Plan Development that is located east of Crowfoot Valley Road, which is outlined in red on this map. So the proposed PD amendment is being proposed due to the change in the location of North Pineary Parkway, which is proposed to be moved further south within the development, which requires internal planning areas to be relocated or changed. So you have the existing Hess Ranch PD on the left, and then the proposed on the right-hand side, so you could see where that alignment has changed. The proposed change in alignment will allow the roadway to connect to the revised alignment of North Pineary Parkway as it will cross Cherry Creek to the east within unincorporated Douglas County. In addition to the road realignment, staff and the applicant have also agreed to amend the zoning to allow for only commercial uses in Planning Area Forty-four, which is the southeast corner of Bayou Goldsch Road and North Pineary Parkway. Residential uses will be removed from this planning area and reallocated to other planning areas within this development. So the proposed sketch plan is, has a total of eight hundred and ninety residential lots within fourteen planning areas. The sketch plan includes a hundred and thirty-six residential units and paired homes within planning areas thirty-five, thirty-six, and forty-three, which are zoned mixed-use under the Hess Ranch Plan Development. Those are highlighted in blue. The mixed-use planning areas are not included within the preliminary plan. The proposed preliminary plan includes a total of seven hundred and fifty-three single-family residential lots on four hundred and six point six seven acres. The acreage between the sketch and preliminary plans increases due to the incorporation of a detention pond located on the west side of Crowfoot Road, and that's highlighted in blue. The applicant has proposed a comprehensive roadway network to provide access to all internal land use areas within the Trails at Crowfoot. Two new full movement access points are planned along Crowfoot Valley Road, the future Chambers Road, Bayou Goldsch Road, and the future North Pineary Parkway. The development is proposing a total of one hundred and twenty-eight point nine eight acres of open space, which satisfies the minimum requirements outlined within the annexation agreement and the development plan. Those are highlighted in green. The development is required to provide seventeen point five nine acres of park space. The applicant is proposing a total of nineteen point one eight acres of park space, which exceeds the minimum amount of park space required. And that new blue area that just appeared, um, that is Planning Area Thirty-eight, which is located north of North Pineary Parkway and west of Bayou Goldsch Road. It's eighteen point one acres. It's proposed as a regional park that will be dedicated to the Town of Parker once constructed. Trail systems are proposed throughout the development, and here they come. Um, and there's a regional trail that will provide access through the development across north, or across Crowfoot Valley Road over to the Cherry Creek Trail.
Bring that.
In addition, there is a school site that is planned for the property that is now highlighted in yellow, if you can see it at the north of the property, and also a fire station lot, which is now highlighted in red, that will also be part of this development. So the town's master plan identifies the Hess Ranch property as low-density residential, which allows for a maximum density of two point two units per acre. The master plan also identifies the intersection of North Pineary Parkway and Chambers Road, or Bayou Goldsch Road, as a neighborhood center. Neighborhood centers are characterized as retail, office, or service commercial areas designed to serve the needs of the surrounding residents. Neighborhood centers are per, also permit higher, higher-density residential as transitional uses to the lower-density land use areas surrounding them. These provisions are included within the mixed-use designated areas in the Hess Ranch PD. The Hess Ranch Plan Development complied with the town's master plan when it was originally approved in two thousand and five, and the proposed amendment complies with the master plan today. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed, confirmed capacity and are available, and the rezoning satisfies the nine criteria required for land use, required within the land use ordinance. Also, the Planning Commission reviewed these requests on October twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff recommends that town council approve the Hess Ranch Plan Development First Amendment and the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plans, subject to the six conditions contained within the staff report. This concludes the staff report, staff presentation. The applicant is here and does have a presentation for you guys as well.
Alright, wonderful. Before we invite the applicant up, council, do you have any questions for Stacy?
I do. Stacy, did I overlook it, uh, the purple jagged lines were the trails? And was, did I miss that they, there was a trail that went into the eighteen-acre regional park?
Yes, let me get back here for you. Whoop, maybe?
Keep going, a little bit further.
(laughing) Yes, so there are trails around the entire property. Um, the regional trail goes along the north side of the property, and hopefully I can get that to pull up for you in just a minute, maybe. Um, but there are trails that go along the top, then they connect into the sidewalks, so they are detached sidewalk through the through the subdivision that then connect into the regional park.
Cause the purple dash line, I, I didn't see one going into the, to that regional park.
Yeah.
But you're saying...
The detached sidewalk.
Is acting as...
The trail.
The trail goes to that detached sidewalk and that goes into the regional park? Okay.
Right, and then there'll be a trail system throughout the regional park as well.
Is it, is it possible to pull it back up? Cause I have the same question regarding the southeastern quadrant, and it's not connected to itself. It seems like it's three quarters of a trail.
We need purple dash lines.
Let me see if I can get this to work.
Technology...
Oh, let me help.
There it is.
There it is.
Yes, and so, once you get to the south side, the southwest quadrant over there, there's the regional trail that comes down along Crowfoot Valley Road, um, down into there, and then it does connect to the on-street trail system or sidewalks to get over to the other portion of the property.
We have, we have Bayou, I'm sorry, we have, well, both, Bayou Goldsch Crossing and North Pineary Parkway, which will be major collectors. I'm just worried about the traffic if I wanna make a loop around my new home. Okay.
Other questions? Alright, the applicant's here. Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Uh, so, good evening. Uh, John Prestwich with PCS Group. Uh, we're a land planning and landscape architectural firm. Uh, our address is two hundred Calamath Street, Denver, Colorado, eight oh two two three. Uh, you know, we're very excited about, uh, being here and being involved in the Trails at Crowfoot Community. Uh, you know, Stacy's done a great job with her presentation, so I'll, I'll try and keep this pretty brief. Uh, you know, so before we get into the project details, you know, I wanted to take a moment, uh, acknowledge that, you know, any great project really takes a team of dedicated people working together. In this case, I, I don't mean just our consultant team. I also wanted to take a moment and recognize all of the collaboration that we've had with the Town of Parker Planning Departments, Parks Departments, and Engineering Departments. Uh, you know, from very early on, we've had many meetings, and all the way through the complex design and review process, this has really been a great experience crafting this community. I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, you know, again, the entire team's been working to develop really a thoughtful plan that we think responds to the site, the adjacent properties, you know, a plan that makes economic sense and satisfies all the technical requirements. Uh, and the team has a tremendous amount of experience crafting communities throughout Colorado. So the ownership group actually consists of several individuals with, uh, extensive experience creating communities up and down the front range of Colorado. On this slide, there are a couple of images from one of the recent projects that the ownership group is completing. Uh, the community is Leyden Rock in the city of Arvada. And Leyden Rock was recognized last year as the ninth fastest-selling master plan community in the United States, and in fact, was the only Colorado community to make the top twenty-five. You know, Stacy really kinda gave us a rundown on the project history, but, you know, again, the property was annexed to the Town of Parker and zoned in two thousand and three, and then there've been a series of, uh, amendments. Uh, most recently, the property obtained approvals as the Hess Ranch Plan Development. And the most southeast portion of the larger Hess Ranch is what we're discussing this evening. So, basically, we're requesting approval on three related items. Uh, the first is an amendment to the existing PD. Generally, the amendment includes revisions to planning area boundaries to accommodate a road alignment that was finalized after the original PD was completed. Uh, the off-site road alignment is the continuation of the extension of North Pineary Parkway. And the off-site design through Douglas County will connect, uh, across Cherry Creek to Parker Road. The second request is for the approval of a sketch plan. Um, the sketch plan really provides the conceptual design for the overall project, and finally, approval of a preliminary plan, which really follows, uh, the sketch plan, but provides more detail to ensure the Town of Parker planning and engineering standards can be met. So similar to Stacy's slide, this, this slide depicts the current approved PD on the left and the proposed PD on the right. You can see that the overall land uses and general locations are consistent, and the biggest change is that extension of North Pineary Parkway. It now exits to the east, more towards the south of the property. And that was done to match a road design that was completed after the original PD was approved. Uh, Douglas County extension is highlighted on the far right of the slide, uh, in light blue. And the alignment depicted on the currently approved PD would not have been able to meet road standards, um, in anticipating connecting to Douglas County property, uh, further to the north of where the road was ultimately actually designed. Overall, we still maintain the same number of units that are already approved on the property. And as the road shifted to the south, we were actually able to increase the size of the neighborhood park by about an acre. Uh, the open space at the zoning level remains a hundred and one point six acres, and it actually increases when we get to the more detailed sketch and preliminary plan phases. Also, in collaboration with the Town of Parker, we have restricted the mixed-use, uh, Planning Area Forty-four from allowing residential uses. Uh, and that planning area is highlighted with a blue star. Uh, it was important to the town to maintain a commercial use in that area, and the existing PD, you know, states that if market conditions warrant, the developer may build residential, but, uh, in collaboration with the town, we, again, we've restricted Planning Area Forty-four from residential uses. Uh, we can probably go through these pretty quickly. I think Stacy's done a good job on this, but, uh, you know, I, I did bring up the approval considerations for the PD amendment. Um, you know, the need existing for the proposal, it's really spurred by the change in the road alignment. Uh, the particular parcel of ground is the correct site for development. We're really not changing the approved land uses. Uh, there was no error in the original zoning, but there have been changes in the area, uh, again, related to the, uh, realignment of North Pineary Park, Parkway to the east of the site. Um, there is adequate circulation. Um, you know, we've provided a, a traffic analysis and it's been reviewed through staff. Uh, you know, additional municipal service costs would not be incurred with this. It's really the same as what was originally approved. Um, in terms of environmental, uh, impacts, you know, again, we followed the original PD in defining open space and trail corridors, and this request would not change what's been, uh, previously anticipated. And then consistency with the Town of Parker's master plan maps, goals, and policies. Uh, and again, adequate water, sewer, uh, all those kinds of things are, are accommodated. So the sketch and preliminary plan really work in concert. Um, you know, initially, with staff, we talked about doing multiple sketch and preliminary plans for the property, but in working with the town, it was really determined that it would be best to do the entire property or as much of it as we could. Uh, this really allowed our team and the town to best analyze things like road connections, utility extensions, uh, open space and park areas. So generally, the sketch plan further refines the, uh, PD zoning. Uh, and all the sketch plan actually depicts about a hundred and forty-one acres of open space and park uses. Uh, it's over thirty-five percent of the property and, and exceeds the PD commitment. Additionally, as part of working with the school district, uh, we increased the size of the school site by about a half an acre. And then all the land uses and locations are consistent with the, uh, PD. Sketch plan maintains the same number of residential units, and the preliminary plan depicts the seven hundred and fifty-three single-family lots, as well as various tracks for the future mixed-use areas, parks, and open spaces, etc. areas, parks, and open spaces, et cetera. So, this exhibit is the actual sketch plan map depicting the development areas, open space, parks, school, potential future fire station. It's probably a little hard to see, but I've included the chart from both the sketch and preliminary plan to show how the plan continues to refine in terms of open space and park space.
There isn't a human alive that could read those little lines.
I'll get them, I'll get them for you. So, the PD committed the project to about 101.6 acres of open space and a 17-acre park, for a total of about 119 acres worth of parks and open space. So again, the sketch plan further defined those uses to about 140 acres, and the preliminary plan actually further refines those uses to now 148 acres of park and open space. I guess the point of that is that it's, we're actually about 46 acres of additional park and open space, just through the continued design efforts. You know, it's almost a 45% increase, so that's kind of the point of those charts. Sorry they're hard to read, but I'll get, I'll get you those.
Yeah, no worries.
So, this slide shows the overall sketch and preliminary plan with Crowfoot Valley on the west side, 300-foot buffer from Crowfoot to the single-family lots. The primary entry from the community will come from the intersection of Crowfoot Valley Road and Bayou Gulch, with an additional access point further south along Crowfoot Valley with North Pineary Parkway. You might skip it. And this slide shows the concept for the primary entry monument. The idea is to take advantage of the natural landform and highlight as much of the existing natural vegetation on that existing hill slope as possible. In fact, the general landscape approach is to utilize primarily native plantings and use of masses of ornamental grasses to highlight key intersections. Here's the same monument from an elevated perspective, and I think you can see, you know, how the natural landform kind of comes to a point at this intersection, and the monument has actually been built into that natural landform. And then just, you know, anticipating using sort of soft, minimal uplighting on the monument itself. You know, in some of our early meetings, one of the items that we worked on with staff was looking at appropriate buffers for the homes along North Pineary Parkway, and that area is generally identified by the orange box on this slide. And so, we prepared a series of images, you know, modeled from the proposed design to review what the buffer would look like. So in general, we have about a 35-foot area beyond the right-of-way before the rear of the proposed lots. In reality, that's about 48 feet from the back of the curb. We're also proposing open fencing, which will increase the open feel of the area, and then an additional element is meandering the walk within the combination of the right-of-way and the buffer area. We think that actually creates interesting pockets for planting, landscape grading, and finally, through combination of native planting and grade change, we think we've really created an attractive buffer from North Pineary Parkway to the proposed homes. We've also developed secondary monuments to complement the primary monument with the use of stone and stucco elements, along with the community logo. There are monuments located at the entries into the neighborhoods off of Bayou Gulch and North Pineary Parkway, as well as this community identity element at the intersection of Bayou Gulch and North Pineary. And then this plan exhibit highlights the pocket parks and neighborhood park over the master plan. You know, the pocket parks are centrally located within the various sub-neighborhoods to act as gathering places and also act as visual terminus, giving identity to these neighborhoods. And the circles represent a four-to-five-minute walk, so you can see that the park locations provide excellent access for residents of Trails at Crowfoot to community amenities. One of the things we're really excited about is the actual neighborhood park plan. We've worked with the Town of Parker's Parks Department on this, and the design really balances active and more passive areas, as well as manicured and more native areas.
Is that this golf on the right-hand side there?
It is.
Josh, now Josh is going to put his house up for sale and move.
Well, it's, you know, really, working with, with staff, it became a natural fit for this. Now, the park will include a baseball field, a multi-use field, playground area with shade structure, picnic area, three tennis courts, and it can be actually striped for up to 12 pickleball courts.
Now you lost us.
There's, there's a full basketball court, small pool clubhouse area, and off-street parking. The Crusher Fines Trail Loop is about a half a mile in length in the park, and the park is generally higher in elevation on the west side and falls to the east, so the active amenities are generally on the higher side of the park, and the more passive areas are generally on the lower side of the park. So this is a view looking across the multipurpose field play area. You can see the baseball on the top left, some of the off-street parking, tennis courts, basketball court, and the pool area in the top right. And then this view is looking southeast, so it really showcases the more active uses sitting higher on the terrain with the more passive uses of the park being lower in elevation. And then just to give sort of a flavor, we also modeled up one of the internal pocket parks. Again, the general landscape character is a combination of enhanced native with well-defined manicured areas. The pocket parks generally provide some turf play area, some seating, shade structures, and playground equipment. And then again, just another view of the pocket park on the left is one of the shade structures, has a little bit of a contemporary feel, and I think it shows really the balance between the manicured and more native plantings. We can skip to the next. So, again, criteria, you know, Stacy's really kind of been through all of that, so I think I'll, I'll probably kind of skip through that, and, you know, this concludes our presentation. We're definitely available for questions, and thank you very much for your time this evening.
John? Thank you very much for your presentation, for such a thorough one at that. Council, do you have any questions for John?
No.
Josh?
A couple, a couple things. First of all, kudos. I think it's a well-designed, beautiful layout, and the landscape architects did a great job. I have one pet peeve is obviously Finn's Canyons, and you've done an outstanding job to make everybody feel welcome, whether they're at home or on their way home. I think it's a, it's a beautiful layout. My other thing, and then the big focus of mine, especially recently with, with the increase in traffic, is neighborhood centers. I want to, I want to reiterate the importance of retail, commercial, local to a neighborhood to lessen the need for crosstown traffic. I don't need, if I live here, I don't need to drive over to Parker Road to get my dry cleaning. I want to make sure. So, a question, I guess, is the three other mixed uses that you haven't restricted to commercial, is there a plan for those? Are we, are we looking at those for just multifamily, or are we looking at commercial there also?
Well, we certainly approached brokers about those sites, and the feedback that we've been getting, and actually, Chris is here if he wants to speak to that if I don't say it correctly, but the feedback that we're getting is that the viability of those is pretty darn low. Now, having said that, we are maintaining almost four and a half, five acres on that one corner with, it actually has, I think, the best access, so that was kind of a compromise that we've, we've come to. The current PD simply states that those, those mixed-use areas could be developed either as commercial uses or residential uses. The, the market is certainly leaning towards a higher-density paired home product. That's the feedback we're getting. You know, that's, that would be something that we'll, we'll come back in front of you, but the, the preliminary plan does not include residential uses on those properties, they're just mixed-use tracks. The sketch plan identifies, I can't remember the exact number...
136.
136 units on those three mixed-use areas that are not restricted from residential uses.
Excellent.
If that...
It does, it does. I think that, you know, criteria number eight identifies consistency with the master plan, and in that, the master plan interferes that it's, it's four corners for a neighborhood center. Obviously, four is not reasonable, the market's not calling for that, but I do think staff and myself at least wanted to see two, going home or going to work, coming home kind of situation. I would want that to remain at the top billing if possible. I just think that in order to battle the traffic that we're going to eventually have in this, this town, we need to keep people as close to home and to, I'm not going to use the word burden, but to donate a park to the citizens of Parker and ask the citizens of Parker to maintain that instead of the HOA, that's an added, that's, that's an added cost to our citizens, and thus, it'd be nice to see a way for us to recoup that revenue through a commercial sales tax.
Got it. The, just to be clear on the park, we, we met with the Parks Department to say, do you want this, or do you not want this?
By all means.
Okay, yeah.
By all means, no, absolutely, and of course, they jumped at it, because they're a great Parks Department, you saw that early.
I did.
No, and I fully get that, I agree. I live in a neighborhood that did the same model, and I fully agree with the model, I really, really do. I'm just thinking about the long-term...
Got it.
...investment in the community and to maintain those costs of that beautiful field. I do have a question about the swimming pool. Is that a neighborhood-specific HOA swimming pool?
It is a, it will not be part of the town-maintained park.
Perfect, yeah.
We know what it costs to maintain water, so, thank you. John?
Thank you, Mayor. John, my question is on those multi-use pieces as well. You used the term residential, and, you know, I know multi, multi-use is something very generic. Can I infer from, from the use of the term residential, that is going to be a for-sale product, meaning you're going to restrict it for just for-sale product only on a platnot or something like that?
At this point, we don't have a specific proposal for those corners in this. The sketch plan just identifies those units.
My name is Chris Elliott, and I'm one of the principals with the ownership and developer here. Let me, first, before I answer your question, tell you how excited we are to be here. We got long routes in the Denver metro area, and it's been a long time since we've done a project in Parker. We know some of the history of this particular project, and we want you to know that we're here to cooperate and work through the design and development of a long-term community, and we couldn't be more excited. So, with that, with regard to the, the mixed-use parcels, to the extent we do residential uses, they will be for sale. They won't be for rent product in those areas. And in terms of types of uses, we're contemplating something, as John said, more of a paired or townhouse type of a use. And back to the prior comments about the mixed-use properties, we like to see that kind of thing as well, and as we were looking at this, we really vetted the commercial retail opportunities within the retail community and said, okay, maybe not now, but is there an opportunity in the future to do something here? A couple of things that were strikes against us with this particular site have more to do with the topography and access. In fact, there's no real opportunity at direct access off of what will be Chambers Road or Bayou Gulch Road, as it is called sometimes, as it goes north-south through the community. And then likewise, the North Pineary Parkway extension that goes east-west, same sorts of things. We have access roads that are east and west of that intersection, but because of the nature of the, the traffic volumes that are there, left turns in and out, we're not going to work. So, from a, I don't know what happens to us humans, but when we go to use retail, we want the quickest and most direct access to get us in there, and then we want the most quickest and easiest access out of there. In fact, theories in, in design school tell you that you only buy coffee on your way to work, and you only go to the dry cleaner on your way home, and they try to orient those kinds of uses in retail centers. So, you take that aspect of this, and you, most of the residents would be frustrated in terms of getting in and out because of the lack of access. And then the other thing that just kills it is the topography. Those of you that are familiar with the site know that that main intersection is probably one of the highest spots in the entire community, and it falls away in all four directions from there. And as it falls away, in order to create what would typically be a flat site to accommodate a retail or commercial-type use is really hard implement because it falls so fast. So you'd end up with these step downs, if you will, coming away from it, and it makes it very difficult to, again, take advantage of the visibility of the corner, but be able to get you in there and be able to get a reasonable density out of the commercial use. The planning area 44 that we did agree to confine to a, a commercial use only has with it, in addition to kinder, gentler topography, it also has the fire station site at the south end. That's the purple area that shows up on the drawing. And in the course of our conversation with staff, what we agreed is that obviously that purple site is designated for the fire district, but should the fire district decide they don't want it, then that site too should become a part of a retail-commercial concept, and the benefits of merging those two pieces together give us a really sizable parcel within which to do the typical neighborhood-type commercial uses. So, we're not betting against the fire district, but we're saying that if they don't go there, then we've really got a nice viable corner. In addition, we have, it doesn't show up on the drawing, but there is a roadway in Douglas County in the adjacent Cielo community that has a full movement access just south of the purple parcel.
You can see the little stub there on the map.
Your eyes are better than mine.
It's the glasses.
No, good. But that, that access would then in turn provide access back into that non-residential parcel, the commercial parcel, and we think that really makes it that much more viable there, so that's my explanation, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
John, did you have something else?
Yeah, no, I just want to thank you again for the explanation. I think it looks fantastically wonderful. Again, with the paired housing, I'm very encouraged. I think there's been a, an imbalance for many reasons of apartments kind of coming before us, or not coming before us, so I'll be anxious to, to see how you memorialize that in the documents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to make you proud.
Question I have is on the school site, that's, I know the school district sometimes will take cash in lieu, sometimes will ask for land, and you've got clearly designated land to that. Is it, maybe, I don't know if this is for Jim or for you guys, is this going to be deed restricted for, only for a school? Because my worry is that if it is given to the district, and then the district decides to, you know, fulfill their requirements of educating these kids with a charter somewhere else, and then this plot of land gets owned by them, gets sold off for commercial or something else?
Mayor, that's a very good point, at least historically. I'm not aware that there have been deed restrictions, but that's certainly something we could entertain.
My only, again, my only concern is that you've got a beautiful plan here, beautiful plan, and it comes to fruition, and then the school never comes to fruition from the district's standpoint, and they sell the land for a profit and a commercial development, which I like the commercial money, but I, that's not a great place for the commercial to live, and so that's why I'm curious if the, and if you don't know, you don't know. I'm just...
I'm not familiar with there being any restriction in the annexation agreements or other that would dictate a deed restriction, but clearly, we'd be, it'd behoove us to be able to represent to our homeowners that that's a school site, and to the extent that we can deed restrict, we're happy to do so.
Okay. Just, just as a thought, don't want to end up, our people on council and mayor, you know, eight years from now, sitting here going with neighborhoods, walking in going, I bought this beautiful house in this beautiful area, and now all of a sudden, what was supposed to be a school has got drying cleaners and, you know, so on. So, anyway, thank you very much. That's the only question I have. Other questions, guys? No? All right, thank you guys very much. We'll open it up for public comment at 8:16 PM. The same rules as apply as earlier, three-minute time limit, name and address for the record. Open it up. Anyone here to give testimony on this item? Okay, see you and done. We'll close public comment at 8:16 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or motion on two different items.
Move to approve ordinance 3.315.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plans based upon staff findings with the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Amy, all in, or, please vote. I was going to do a voice vote, then. Motion pass- Motion passes unanimously, congratulations, guys, next item up is item eight B, this is ordinance number one dot five oh seven on first reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the twenty eighteen budget for the town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. Mary Lou, you are up.
All right.
Rhonda's running backup for you there, right?
Yep.
All right.
We're a team. And I'm kinda feeling that change in time kicking in, I don't know about you guys.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, tonight is the public hearing on the budget, we've got a couple of important dates that we wanna start out, um, having discussion with. First of all, on September twenty-fifth and twenty-eighth, we did have the retreat with council, and a couple of presentations there. Tonight is the public hearing on the budget, followed up by a study session next Monday, the, uh, public hearing on the property tax levy and the budget approval on the twentieth, and then on December fourth, the approval of the property tax levy. So I think that steps us through all of the legal steps, uh, that need to occur in order for us to meet state guidelines. So let's move forward and take a look at some of the numbers. These are all numbers that were shared with you during the retreat. Um, this slide actually compares our two thousand seventeen amended budget and our projections as of the end of August of this year with our two thousand sixteen actuals. The projected numbers are actually the numbers that we use in developing the two thousand eighteen budget. Uh, unfortunately, we always have this time lag that goes on because we start the budget prep work so early in the year. So, uh, we work with our actuals and our projections as of August thirty-first. We do expect that the numbers will continue to move, uh, but they will be the basis for the budget as it comes forward to you. Couple of highlights from the general fund, the first one is that the general fund revenue is projected to grow nine percent on a year-over-year basis, so we're looking at good positive growth that way. Uh, we have talked about some of our numbers slowing down in their growth rate, we are continuing to see that. But, again, I wanna emphasize so much that there are so many communities that would be so happy to be in our shoes right now. Uh, sales tax is the primary driver of our revenue, we are looking at nine percent growth there. We are, with our projected numbers, looking at expenditures scaling back by about two million dollars. So that reflects changes in timing in many of our projects, as you know, we have some very large projects in streets and in parks. We can't always project the timing of those projects exactly. So right now, we're looking at our expenditures being about two million dollars less, and that is across all three appropriation levels. We're seeing it in expense, operating expense, in our capital outlays, and also in our transfers. The last highlight for the general fund is our ending cash balance. We had the conversation earlier about potentially developing a policy of maintaining a twenty-five percent working capital reserve, and with the numbers that we have in front of you tonight, I can tell you that our two thousand seventeen is projected to end with a cash balance in that range slightly above, it's actually about twenty-six point two percent, I believe. If we take a minute then and move to two of our other funds, first of all, our Parks and Recreation Fund, they are benefiting from that good, strong sales tax, uh, revenue growth also. And, the one item that isn't on the slide, but I have to mention for Jim, is the fact that we have an estimate of our membership fees that we just can't get right, and we can't get it right because it's growing so fast.
They keep selling memberships?
They do, so kudos to Parks and Rec from that direction also.
If you could just call down there, Jim.
Well, and I just heard Lifetime put a increase in their rate, so we might be getting even more from that, so.
We have three major projects within the Parks and Rec Fund that are, um, underway or finishing up for the year, so you can see those there. Um, major dollars being spent in those three programs. Switching then to our cultural fund, we are seeing that the transfers from general fund and from the excise fund are growing in two thousand seventeen as compared to sixteen, primarily because of the capital projects that were undertaken within the cultural fund. We had both the schoolhouse, which is projected to be wrapping up this year, and then also the annex work that is going to be finished up in two thousand eighteen. With that, let's shift to some numbers that actually show our two thousand eighteen requested budget, it's in the far right there. As we started to pull together the budget, it became very clear early on that not all of the departmental requests were going to be able to be met during two thousand eighteen. And so that, um, probably put the budget into, um, a, a harder category than what had been happening over the past couple of years. We worked very hard to bring forward a balanced, um, budget. In working with Michelle, we developed three philosophies that we wanted to carry forward as we developed the budget. The first was, we wanted to maintain the cash balance that we are projecting that we will end two thousand seventeen with. So you can see from the numbers, we are projecting to end two thousand seventeen with just a little over fifteen million dollars in cash. We will end two thousand eighteen with just slightly more than that, fifteen point two million. We also wanted to continue the recognition of the importance of our employees, I'm gonna talk about that in just a little bit more detail in a couple more slides. And then also, we made the decision to maintain our current FTE levels. So again, I will show you a slide that has those FTE numbers, and you'll see that there is no growth from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. So let's take a look at some of the numbers in a little bit more detail, again, we're going to start out with the general fund. First of all, looking at our revenue, we have five revenue line items that make up eighty-three percent of our two thousand eighteen revenue budget. You see three of them here in front of you, the other two are the road and bridge shareback and the highway user taxes. Again, you can see that the sales tax number is the largest number in our revenue, and we are projecting an eight point five percent growth there. Probably the other number that jumps out is that twelve point nine percent growth in the real property taxes, that's due to the reassessment of property that's been done by the Douglas County Assessors Office, and this is their, um, preliminary numbers, I'm expecting the final numbers later this month. If we move from that to the expenditure side on the general fund, we'll take a look at it in two different ways. First of all, by departments. I think the, um, interesting thing here, which is something that is very common in most municipalities, is we have both our police department and our public works with over fifty perc, eight percent of our expenditures. These are the two departments that most, um, citizens would think of as necessary programs that need to be provided by local government, and that is definitely the case here. You can see general government is the next largest one, and from there, we go on down in size. Looking at it from an expenditure perspective, again, it's what you would expect to see with the majority of the dollars going to salary and benefits, and the next largest category being our purchase services. Here in Parker, um, as I have found, um, in talking with my peers in some of the other communities, it's very common, uh, to see salary and benefits, maybe not as high as I am used to seeing, I'm used to seeing that up in the sixty to seventy percent. We tend to contract out more of our work, but that seems to be very common here in the Colorado area. Um, again, you can see how the other areas break down. We are limiting our growth in our operating expenditures to two point four percent for two thousand eighteen. To kind of put this in perspective for you, if we look at the CPI for the first six months of two thousand seventeen as compared to two thousand sixteen, uh, we were looking at a CPI growth of three point one percent. So maintaining our growth going into two thousand eighteen at the two point four percent took some work. We, um, undertook a number of different ways to make that happen. One of the things that I talked about is the commitment to our employees, and one of the programs we have underway is the continuation of the pay-for-performance, that is being funded at four percent this year. So we have pay-for-performance at four percent, we're averaging two point four percent. Obviously, there are other expenses that are coming in under that to make that all balance out. The, uh, FTEs are going to remain unchanged at two hundred and forty-four, that is the first step that we took in maintaining the control over our expenses for two thousand eighteen. The next two bullet points both address the commitment to employees, the first one is in reference to the pay-for-performance that, that's being budgeted at an average of four percent. The second one is, I think, just a tremendous benefit that we provide to our employees, and that is for our employee-only choice in our healthcare program, we have a premium of zero, so they pay no cost for their premium, and the town absorbs all that. We've been able to maintain that within this budget.
He just said forty-seven applications just came into the town of Parker.
That's all right, I think we have some areas where having a hard time building, so, if they're in the right place, we'll take them.
Tom, just cut our Facebook feed and put an application in right now.
I know some people who will be happy. All right, this next slide takes a look at our, um, FTEs, which translates as full-time equivalents. Here you can see in two thousand sixteen, we were just under two hundred and forty employees, and in seven, two thousand seventeen, and with our proposed two thousand eighteen budget, we'll be just under the two forty-four. From there, I know there's a lot of interest always in our capital programs. These are programs that are budgeted across all of our funds. The total for our capital projects for two thousand eighteen is slightly above fifteen million. These nine projects total just over ten million, so they represent about two-thirds of the dollars that will be spent. I am in no way an expert on each of those, but, um, you can see that they range in dollars from half a million all the way up to the one and three-quarter million dollars. This is our hardest-to-read slide tonight, but I don't think it comes anywhere close to one of those in the last presentation. The, um, capital outlays come out of all of our funds, and they come out on various, um, categories. So this depicts for you all of our funds that have capital expenditures included though, in them, and also give you a sense of the type of expenditures that they are. If we move from that, then, one of our, um, expenditures as a town is the support of our, for our community organizations. And as I mentioned, we, um, struggled a bit with our budget this year, and there were many internal requests that were turned down in order to bring forward the budget that we have tonight. And with an eye to that limitation, funding requests were reviewed by various committees within the town, and, um, we had to put some strict limitations on things. So we are proud to be continuing our community partnerships, albeit at a reduced level in two thousand eighteen. So you can see in the two thousand seventeen budget, we were a little over two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and our recommended funding for two thousand eighteen is slightly below that, at just under two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The next slide is an insight into our transfers. So transfers take place between all of our funds and for various reasons. This, uh, shows all of the transfers that are taking place, it shows you the funds that they are coming out of and going into, and the reason that they occur, because each of them has a reason for happening, we don't do them just for the fun of it. Uh, this is probably one of the aspects that makes balancing the budget the most difficult, because you get down and you think you're done, and then all of a sudden, you've got to make sure all of these transfers are taking place the way they should. So from a transparency perspective, I think this is important for us to be sharing with the community as part of our budget presentation. This is the end of the budget presentation, and so I can take any questions.
Council, questions for Mary Lou? Wow, that's a great picture.
Kinda looks like what it's supposed to tomorrow morning.
Uh, stop it. Stop it. All right, council questions? No?
We've, we've been through this.
I know, we've been, yeah. Yeah, so people watching, this is not council's first time seeing the budget, you know, going through this presentation, this has been months and months of number crunching and head-banging and, and everything else, this is the final presentation because we have a legal obligation to, by ordinance, put through our, a balanced budget every year. And so that's what we're in the process of doing now, but that brings us to this point, it is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for public comment at eight thirty-two PM, if there's anyone here wishing to address council on this budget presentation. Scout, you're thinking of it, aren't you? Dad's like, yes, Scout's like, no.
They're like, is he done yet?
All right, we're gonna close public comment at eight thirty-two PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance one dot five zero seven on first reading and to schedule second reading and public hearing for November twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee, council please vote. Motion passes unanimously, and the next item, which is the last item on our public agenda tonight, is item eight C. This is Tax and Fee Assistant Program Agreement For Parker Lodging LLC. Matt, you're gonna do us the honors.
Mister Mayor, council members, good evening.
Would you call that a camel blazer, or?
Brown.
Brown.
I would call it camel.
Tan.
Tan.
Brown. Camel.
It goes with the blue and white.
Goes with the blue and white, all right, go ahead.
But that makes your eyes go screwy. Tonight.
They can't get in?
Uh-oh. Tonight we have before you a tax and fee assistance program application from Parker Lodging LLC. The tap request is a, in support of the approved La Quinta Inn and Suites Hotel in the Cherrywood Commercial Area at the southeast corner of Jordan Road and E four seventy. Parker Lodging LLC is a subsidiary of Colorado Hospitality Services, a Colorado-based hospitality development operator with numerous projects throughout the western U.S. Parker Lodging proposes the development of a four-story, eighty thousand square foot freestanding structure to accommodate a new La Quinta Inn and Suites Hotel. The project is part of the larger Cherrywood Commercial Area that encompasses an approximately thirty thousand additional square feet of inline commercial space in two buildings. The proposed La Quinta Inn and Suites Hotel would consist of a total of a hundred and twenty guest rooms and provide amenities that include an indoor visitor lounge, meeting rooms, breakfast kitchen, and exercise facility, a very common, uh, limited-service hotel. The business project, the business projects employ, projects employment of approximately forty individuals with an average annual salary of about fifty thousand dollars per year. The applicant, and there's a mistake here in your actual staff reports, only call that to your attention, the applicant projects the start of construction still this year, with the completion in late twenty nineteen, not in twenty eighteen, or early twenty twenty, depending on how the, the business, or the project build cycle comes about. The project has an estimated core and shell valuation of approximately ten million dollars. The proposed tap agreement with Parker Lodging LLC will include a fifty percent rebate of building permit fees and construction use taxes, a fifty percent rebate of sales taxes excluding lodging taxes for a period not to exceed five years, and will result in a combined maximum rebate of all fees and taxes that shall not exceed two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. There is also a stipulation in that tap agreement that the subject is, that the tap agreement is subject to the opening of the La Quinta Inn and Suites Hotel, as opposed to another brand or, or a, a different style of, of lodging facility. Staff has reviewed the project and found that it meets the specific goals of the program in that it, one, contributes to the diversity of jobs and employment opportunities within the town of Parker, and, two, that it brings a value-added result of primary employment within the town as well. Therefore, staff approves, suggests approval of the agreement. That concludes the staff report in itself. The applicant, Dr. Bruce Romani, is up here, uh, and would like to make a few, uh, comments. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, before we have you come up, council, do you have any questions for Matt specifically, before we have the applicant? Nope, okay, sir, come on down.
Let me introduce for you Dr. Romani, uh, who's the president and CEO of the hospitality company.
Thanks so much.
Dr. Romani?
Good evenings. My name is Bruce Romani, I have been in Colorado since nineteen seventy-eight. I do own many hotels in Colorado, different cities, Fort Collins, Greeley, and Denver market area. So La Quinta Inn is a, the new franchise company, and they come up with a great, uh, look and a brand-new, uh, design which meets today's market and future with a high internet and larger TVs and all kinds of basically amenities which a new public wants. internet and larger TVs and all kinds of basically amenities which a new public wants. So we decided, you know, as far as, uh, getting Parkers would believe it's a great town, and, you know, we'd like to be there. And I've been living in Colorado for years, and definitely love to be in this town. And I believe this hotel will do a great job and as far as a presentation and brand-new look, fresh, and, uh, kind of takes care of the customers. Some of the people right now, they're staying on, uh, by I-25 and Denver Texan area. I believe that will bring some of the business back to Parker. So, you know, there hasn't been a new hotel in Parker for, for a while. I believe, you know, with a fresh look and everything will bring some new kind of business back here. So looking forward building this hotel. And, um, again, I've built a few hotels. Currently, I'm building two hotels at Denver International Airport, 120 rooms each next to each other on 60th and Tower Road. So we do have capacity to build, and I'm owner-operator. I'm, you know, basically have about 1,000 employees working for me, and looking forward to can bring this good business and, uh, run a good operation in Parker. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
No? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at eight thirty-eight PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address Seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight thirty-eight, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Move to approve the tax and fee program assistance agreement for Parker Lodging LLC.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Before we adjourn, though, I just want to explain something to those of you who are left in the audience. Hey, thank you very much for staying to the end. And those, um, who are watching on Facebook as well, we get questioned a lot of times about economic development incentives and, and money that the town uses to incentivize businesses in town. We just passed, the council just passed a tax and fee assistance program. And I want to be clear of what that really means, cause you hear big numbers like $200,000, $260,000, things like that. And sometimes people wonder, how is that money being spent? Do we just simply write a check to the applicant and call it a day? He smiled when I said that, cause he knows that's not what happens. The way these incentive programs work, if you heard the detail from what Matt said, is the applicant collects all their taxes just like normal and pays them to the town just like normal, pays all their fees just like normal. In the contract, as long as the applicant maintains their end of the deal, at the end of the, the year, when, after paying all of the hundred percent of the taxes and their fees, in this case, the town rebates 50% of those sales taxes and fees back to the applicant in the term of whatever comes first, five years or 200 and whatever thousand dollars reaches. So ultimately, we hope that they reach the $290,000 before the five years, cause that means their business is doing better than they expected it to do. But if the business does not happen, does not come to fruition, no money is paid out from the town. It's a, we work on a rebate program, not a gift program. And that's a real common thing that we get sometimes, is people say, well, you know, Gander Mountain closed down, and the town's out millions of dollars for that. No, we're, we're not. We don't give them money unless they're, it's a rebate if they've paid it. So there's your two minutes of education. We're at eight forty PM, and with no further business before counsel, we will adjourn.
And recess.
Or, excuse me, we will recess, cause we still have more meeting to go to. You guys can go home, drive safe. Hopefully it won't snow tonight.